I'd like to call the boarder, the Elizabethan City Schools February Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. I'd like to give a special welcome to Mr. Tester from City Council. Happy to have a football team here tonight. We're expecting you to stay for the whole thing. Yeah? Just kidding, not gonna make you do it. I'd like to welcome our teachers that we're going to be recognizing. Just so you guys know, if everybody will, we're going to be recognizing, of course, the football team, we're going to be recognizing some different teachers. After we recognize the lovely Ms. Gloria Hall, I will give everybody a moment to leave. So, if you can just hang tight till then, I'll give everybody a few minutes and you're welcome to stay, but I don't expect you're going to want to. So, anyway, if you would, please stand. Ms. Alexander's going to lead us to pledge the flag in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I'd like you to think about Ms. Jennifer Limeball Taylor, who lost her mother this past week. Also, her father is very, very sick and she had to put her son on a plane to Japan for a two-year tour. And so, that's pretty well worn her out. So, we want to be thinking about her during this moment of silence.
Thank you.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Alexander.
At this time, if the upperclassmen of the football team will come forward up here, Mr. Wilson is going to make some comments, he's going to give the microphone to Coach Whitten, and the players and the coaches, come forward, please. We will be making several pictures at the conclusion of this, so don't run off.
This is, of course, many of the upperclassmen from our 2013 Three Rivers Conference Champion Football Team. We have about 80 players, so obviously, they're not all here, but these are some of the upperclassmen. And I just, and some of our coaches here, some couldn't make it, some are here. I just want to say a word about how proud we are of these guys and what a tribute to our community they are. I can, just personally, I remember the South game going over to the conference championship and we're playing over at Sullivan South, and huge crowd, huge crowd, very festive atmosphere. And we knew South was tough, I mean, they looked pretty well, you know, jamboree doesn't mean anything, but they were very impressive in the jamboree, we'll just put it that way. And, you know, that game started, and I went with Mr. David Wright, our principal, and South hit us in the mouth early and scored, and I looked at Mr. Wright and I said, you know, this could be a long night here, and he goes, yeah, they looked pretty good. And you could just kind of tell that our guys had to adjust to that game a little bit. And it was amazing how they roasted the occasion, and over two quarters, we began to turn the tide, and then at the end, we pulled the win out. And I was so proud of these guys, and it was, the thing that was so great about it is so many of our people just went down out of the bleachers, onto the track, and out onto the field, and they just like hung around for 30 minutes or more after the game, just talking, everybody was so proud of the guys and shaking their hands. And I will say this, South's quarterback came out on the field and was congratulating our guys, and I spoke with him for a minute, he was a class act as well. But, I don't think I've ever been prouder of a team, probably as much for the way that you looked at the beginning of the game and you were like, oh, this, you know, this is not going to be easy. And these guys just battled back and never quit and turned that game around. And I think it just, it was a great thing to watch. If you missed that game, you missed a treat, because it was really wonderful. And I want to thank them for all their hard work, many of them for the past four years. Tell them how much we appreciate them, and our coaching staff, how much I appreciate those guys, how hard they work. If you're not in our school, you have no idea how hard these players and coaches work. If you're not up there on Thursday night before a Friday game and watching those guys go out, our coaches go out on the field after a JV or a freshman game and paint the lines, and also the Touchdown Club, all the work that you guys did, and I really appreciate you folks as well. But, it's just so much work goes into this, the time that they put in is unbelievable. But, I think our coaches will tell you, no matter how hard you coach, no matter what you know, you know, it's not about the X's and O's, it's about the Johnnys and Joes, and you got to have the kids. And we have some great football players at our school, and our coaches do a remarkable job developing that talent. And at this time, I'll hand the microphone to Coach Whitten, but I just want to congratulate him on the great job that he does at our school and all of his staff, Coach.
Well, first, let me thank the guys showing up here tonight. You know, there's a lot of people that help support our program. Coach Wilson does a great job of allowing us to be able to get what we need to protect a number of these guys. Tony Briggs is here as a president of our Touchdown Club to make sure these guys get fed, which is a lot of food, you can imagine that. But, you know, 21 and 5 in the last two years, this group of seniors, three out of the four years were conference championships, and we've been four out of five years. We've had 29 all-conference football players, so when you have a lot of, when you're winning the conference, you've got a lot of guys that are going to be recognized. The thing we're most proud of is we have 31 guys that have 3.0 or better. You know, with 75, 76 guys in our program, we're proud of the work that they put in off the field as well. A number of our guys are represented in FCA, a number of different clubs throughout our school, and many of these guys fight through injuries, play JV freshman games, you know, we do a lot of film study, but, you know, one of the great pieces of our football program is our assistant coaches. You know, there's a lot of question marks about our football team going into this season, because every year, you graduate a great group of young men, and then some guys got to step up. But Coach Og, Coach Hurley are two of the guys that are here, Coach Pierce, Coach Hyder, Coach Boatman, you know, do a lot of great job with our young guys and to make it successful as it is. But, we truly have the best, you know, the best parents, the best support staff, and it's just truly been amazing to work with these great young men. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Trent will form you all up into a photograph, so just do what he says, it relates to, you'll sort of have to bunch together here, folks, and he'll tell you what you have to do. Tall people in the back. We're going to do that with the teachers as a year later on, but it'll be a little bit easier than this. Mr. Van Hes.
It's my pleasure to introduce the Teacher of the Year winners from each building as well as the system level, and the best part about our school system is obviously our kids, and you've seen some prime examples of that today, but the second best thing are our teachers. We have incredible staffs at every location, and that's really what makes the difference. And so, we're very fortunate and we're going to recognize individuals from each of those school locations. So, as I call your name, if you'll please come forward. First of all, at Eastside Elementary for Pre-K 4, Nikisha Campbell. Also, from Eastside, Ms. Julie Smith, who I don't believe was able to make it, she's in Atlanta with her father, who is ill, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers as well. She was the 5-8 Special Area winner from Eastside as well, so we'll get her certificate to her as well. From Harrah McCormick, Pre-K 4, Ms. Pat Seals. And also, from Harrah McCormick for the 5-8 and Special Area, Ms. Cindy Grinstaff. From Westside for the Pre-K 4, is Tammy Marklin. Also, from Westside for the 5-8 and Special Area, Ms. Jackie Harris. From TA Duggar, Ms. Penny Nave. And from Elizabethan High School, Ms. Ann Graves. Those were the building level winners from each location, and then from there, we send on a representative of each of those classifications, one for the high school, a 5-8, and then a Pre-K 4. And we selected those individuals from the group that we just had, and the winners for those who will go on and compete for regional and hopefully for state Teacher of the Year. For Pre-K 4 was Ms. Tammy Marklin. And the 5-8 winner, Ms. Penny Nave. And then 9-12, Ms. Ann Graves. Take a picture here, folks. on a representative of each of those classifications, one for the high school, a 5-8, and then a Pre-K 4. And we selected those individuals from the group that we just had, and the winners for those who will go on and compete for regional and hopefully for state Teacher of the Year. For Pre-K 4 was Ms. Tammy Marklin. And the 5-8 winner, Ms. Penny Nave. And then 9-12, Ms. Ann Graves. Thank you very much.
Will Ms. Gloria Hall and her family please come forward?
Ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you what an honor it is to be able to recognize
an employee for 25 years of faithful service. And if there is a harder work in the individual and a more sensitive human being that's in our system, I don't know who it is. And so, Ms. Hall was concerned that we would tell some of these anecdotes from the past of some of the things she's said and done, and we've done, and things of this nature, but we're not going to do that. But, I can assure you that she is a special person to our system, and I think someone that all the kids love. So, under those circumstances, I will give you this plaque here, she even wants the box, is what she told me. Folks, scoot in here, we need to hold 20 by 30 maybe, it's just like we do with the football team. Mr. Trent?
As I said, you're more than welcome to stay, but if anyone would like to leave now, would be a great opportunity, and thank you guys very much. with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, take your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on. Time to approve the consent and regular agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a comment, I read the letter about the other, and all of us have used it from time to time, not, to my knowledge, we've never used it as a bowling situation, but just to mention special things, good things, to make comments, and of course, I'd like to see that in there, because...
Well, it can still be in there. Basically, at the last meeting, Dr. May had some good points, you had some good points, so I just decided that we would ask Ms. Owen for her opinion. We'll still have, if you'll see, it'll say reports by board members and administrative staff, so when we go to workshops and things like that, we'll still be able to talk about that. But, if you're planning on saying anything, if you want to use the opportunity to make a statement, all we ask is that you just let us know, we'll include that on there, you can still do it. But, that way, every, what she talked about was letting people have, let them know what we're going to talk about. So, you may be talking about something that may interest someone, and they may want to come and hear what you have to say. So, it's in light of, in her opinion, just making sure that the public has a right to know what we're going to be talking about, so if you're going to be using that time to make a statement, just let us know, we'll put it on the agenda. Nothing's going to change, other than everybody will just know what you're going to talk about ahead of time. But, we'll still be able to talk about workshops we attend, things like that, so that hasn't changed, it's just we're going to be a little bit more specific, that if you're going to be taking the opportunity to discuss anything particular, just let us know, that's all I'm asking.
From time to time, for example, well, a lot of times, we've used it to thank people for various things, for example, we'd like to thank all of those, as far as the bus situation, that assisted with that. And those are basically what it's used for, to mention things that we may not have had the opportunity to, so that's all. And I just wanted to bring that out at that time. Thank you.
I would like to make an agenda to the minutes of the last meeting, that would be January 16, 2014, and if you want to, you can remove it and put it at the end, or I can do it now.
So, you want to talk about the minutes?
Yes.
So, that is number one?
That's number one, which is attachment two, under consent agenda.
Okay. What should we do? If you're, are you wanting to discuss something, or you just want to say something about it?
No, I just want to say something about it.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and I'll move it to the end. I'll just make, I'll put it at the end of the agenda, regular agenda, and we can talk about it there.
That'd make a bit of difference.
All right, so we'll move that. It'll be item number 24. There's a couple of things that I would like to make you aware of. Number 14, the regular agenda, agenda item number 14, I need for you to make a correction. The amount says 640 for wireless, Verizon Wireless, and it's actually $2,174. So, if you could make that correction, please. And if it would be the pleasure of the board, I would like to take items 7, 8, 9, and 10, which are all renewal of bid contracts, and deal with them as one item, rather than all four individually, so if everyone would be okay with that, we'll make those, okay. So, we're going to be making those one, we made the adjustment on number 14, we've moved minutes to number 24. Is there anything else? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve consent and regular agenda with stated corrections and movement of item number one from consent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Several things before we get started here, folks, prior to the personnel responses, we cannot say enough how much we appreciate the efforts of Mr. Tester. Thanks in part to his efforts about the release of the $5 million, and we're really excited about what that's going to bring about for our school system and our children. Soon, we'll be having the ribbon cutting at TA Duggar for the fields, and on one of the buildings there will be a bronze plaque with the names of the board members and others, including Mr. Tester. And we hope, we'll notify you when that's going to take place. I think Mr. Carter had said there's a chance that they may have start playing the games at the JV field at the high school first, before, so we can get truly ready for those fields ready to go. So, we'll let you know when that's going to be, and we look forward to you being there in that 20 by 30 shot that we make on the ribbon cutting. We need to commend our maintenance department, over which Mr. Trent is the supervisor, for the round-the-clock monitoring of the boilers at Harrah McCormick. And part of that, of course, was as a result of the gas company and things of this nature and changing out a meter, but anyway, they did that during this period to make sure that there would always be heat at Harrah McCormick, as did, obviously, the principal, who was overseeing that. In reference to the recent bus vandalism, there are two very important positive occurrences. First of all, the work of the following individuals, Mr. Hutchins, Mr. Van Hes, Mr. Marty Street, the honcho of transportation, Mr. Eddie Pleas, certainly Mr. Trent and the IT Department, Mr. Paul Lindberg and his family, who worked diligently down there and spent so many hours, certainly the EHS administration handling that circumstance, Ms. Cindy Walker back in insurance, the bus drivers, SRO Officer Matt Taylor, and the EPD, and of course, the Tennessee Technology classes, Chick Filet, who came across with the donations of food and the purchase of, I believe, pizza in, they were very helpful. So, those people stepped up, and along with them, the second thing I want to mention is, Mrs. Buer, today, we had at Cardi County, Ms. Perkins with us, we've been to Unicorn County and Cardi County, board meetings, and thanked them for their buses, the one with five, one with six, will be going to Washington County, who also provided, I think, five buses, the Johnson Transit System provided one bus, Johnson County offered to send us five that we didn't need. And the irony of that whole thing is, at the end of that first day, we ordinarily had 13 buses that are running, we had 15 out there, as the other 13 were being worked on. So, under those circumstances, bus transportation occurred the next day, and has since then, and that has been taken care of. So, something good has come out of something very negative, and we're just excited about that. We were even able to, out of the deductible, Ms. Wilson worked this out, we were able to pay for rental, bus rental to those boards, and have presented already two checks to those boards of education. It was a tremendous amount of money, but it didn't come out of the taxpayers' dollars, it came out of the deductible for insurance. So, we're so excited about that. I will tell the board members, there is on a copy of Dr. Bill Friss's score report comparing the systems, and if you'll line those things up, you can see, please, the local funding, graduation rate, the things of this nature, you can compare, the first one list is Bristol City, Cardi County, Elizabethan City, I sort of highlighted there, Greenville City, Johnson City, Johnson, excuse me, Kingsport City, so where we are as it relates to where they are with the data. So, that's always good to know, folks, that's how you can really tell where you are. Mrs. Simcox has provided recent information there on the... The amount says 640 for wireless, Verizon Wireless, and it's actually $2,174. So if you could make that correction, please. And if it would be the pleasure of the board, I would like to take Items 7, 8, 9, and 10, which are all renewal of bid contracts, and deal with them as one item, rather than all four individually, so if everyone would be okay with that, we'll make those, okay. So we're going to be making those one. We made the adjustment on number 14. We've moved Minutes to number 24. Is there anything else? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve Consent and Regular Agenda with stated corrections and movement of Item Number 1 from Consent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Yeah, several things before we get started here, folks, prior to the personnel responses, we cannot say enough how much we appreciate the efforts of Mr. Tester. Thanks in part to his efforts about the release of the $5 million, and we're really excited about what that's, that's going to bring about for our school system and our children. Soon, we'll be having the ribbon cutting at TA Duggar for the fields, and on one of the buildings there will be a bronze plaque with the names of the board members and others, including Mr. Tester, and we hope, we'll notify you when that's going to take place. I think Mr. Carter had said there's a chance that, that they may have start playing the games at the JV field at the high school first, before, so we can get truly ready for those fields ready to go. So we'll let you know when that's going to be, and we look forward to you being there in that 20 by 30 shot that, that we make on the ribbon cutting. We need to commend our maintenance department, over which Mr. Trent is the supervisor, for the round-the-clock monitoring of the boilers at Harrah McCormick, and part of that, of course, was as a result of the gas company and things this nature and changing out of meter, but anyway, they did that during this period to make sure that there would always be heat at Harrah McCormick, as did, obviously, the principal, who was overseeing that. In reference to the recent bus vandalism, there are two very important positive occurrences. First of all, the, the work of the following individuals, Mr. Hutchins, Mr. Vanhust, Mr. Marty Street, the honcho of transportation, Mr. Eddie Pleas, certainly Mr. Trent and the IT Department, Mr. Paul Lindbergh and his family, who worked diligently down there and spent so many hours, certainly the EHS administration handling that circumstance, Ms. Cindy Walker back in insurance, the bus drivers, SRO Officer Matt Taylor, and the EPD, and of course, the Tennessee Technology classes, Chick Filet, who came across with the donations of food, and the purchase of, I believe, Pizza Inn. They were very helpful. So those people stepped up, and along with them, the second thing I want to mention is, Mrs. Brewer, today, we had at Cardi County, Ms. Perkins with us, we've been to Unicorn County and Cardi County, board meetings, and thanked them for their buses, the one with five, one with six, we'll be going to Washington County, who also provided, I think, five buses, the Johnson Transit System provided one bus, Johnson County offered to send us five that we didn't need, and the irony of that whole thing is, at the end of that first day, we ordinarily had 13 buses that are running, we had 15 out there, as the other 13 were being worked on. So under those circumstances, bus transportation occurred the next day, and has since then, and that has been taken care of. So something good has come out of something very negative, and we're just excited about that. We were even able to, out of the deductible, Ms. Wilson worked this out, we were able to pay for rental, bus rental, to those boards, and have presented already two checks to those Boards of Education. It was a tremendous amount of money, but it didn't come out of the taxpayers' dollars, it came out of the deductible for insurance, and so we're so excited about that. I will tell the board members, there is on a copy of Dr. Bill Friss's score report comparing the systems, and if you'll line those things up, you can see, please, by, by, to local funding, graduation rate, the things this nature, you can compare, the first one list is Bristol City, Cardi County, Lizbethon City, I sort of highlighted there, Greenville City, Johnson City, Johnson, excuse me, Kingsport City, so where we are as it relates to where they are with the data. So that's, that's always good to know, folks, that's how you can really tell where you are. Mrs. Simcox has provided recent information there on the attendance, which is down just a little bit, but it's still very high. And I'll be going to Greenville on Monday afternoon to hear what the Commissioner of Education has to say, as it relates to the new licensure changes and things of this nature, and I look forward to that, and we'll report that back to our people, report back, that's redundant state, sorry, report that on Tuesday at our central office meeting. So those things, it's, there's a lot going on here, folks, and most of, all of it is good. Anyway, now for the personnel update. Sarah Penley, Westside Interim Grade 5, Effective 122. Vicky Little, Westside Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 122. Johnny Burleson, TA Duggar Head Baseball Coach, Effective 123. Gregory Hyder, TA Duggar Assistant Baseball Coach, Effective 123. Ryan Whitten, TA Duggar Assistant Baseball Coach, Effective 123. Wade Arnold, TA Duggar Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 217. Resignations, Azur Gooj, ESP Childcare Worker at TA Duggar, Effective 116. Cassandra Slagle, ESP Childcare Worker at TA Duggar, Effective 124. Next page. Leave of Absence, Cheryl Pitts, Westside Guidance Counselor, from 1214 to 11714. Martin Street, EHS Teacher, from 115 to 128. Jody Fitzsimmons, Harrah McCormick Cook, from 2314 to 21714. Heather Dykes, Westside Cook, from 21114 to 22114. Substitute Teacher, Adrian Pennlin, Effective 131. Chelsea Woodacre, Effective 131. And Samuel Adams, Effective 212. And ma'am, that is my report. Thank you.
I have one thing on reports by board members. I want to thank the board members for taking the time to fill out Ms. Alexander's evaluation. I did it a little bit different this year, rather than my taking everyone's notes and everything, and kind of compiling it on one thing, I just made copies, and I did that because, while I love you all, you have terrible penmanship, and I can't always read your handwriting, so I just printed it off, actually, Ms. Perkins did, so you can read what everyone had to say. The evaluations were about the same as they've been for the past several years, about four, about five or six years. Ms. Alexander has three very, very high evaluations, two that were not as high, but everybody put their remarks, and again, I think with the success of our school system, what our students are doing, what our teachers are doing, what this report says, I want to thank you, I think you're doing a great job, and happy to have you for another year, and for everything. I think I speak on behalf of the board, we want to thank everyone on the way that bus, that the vandalism situation was handled. It was really, this is amazing, we live in a great community, and we had so many people step up. Our administration did a great job, the hospital did a great job, so we want to thank everybody just from us, thank you all very much for, for everything. All right, let's move on, we've got a lot to do. Thank you. I'll use this for these. First item on the regular agenda, and we're going to, I'll read all these at once, so I apologize ahead of time. Approved Renewal of Bid 2012-2013-01-S in the Purchase of Food Items from Cisco Knoxville for Bid Period February 1, 2014 through July 31, 2014. Next is Approved Renewal of Bid 2012-2013-02-S in the Purchase of Miscellaneous Cafeteria Supplies from Cisco Knoxville for the Bid Period February 1, 2014 through July 31, 2014. Next, Approved Renewal of Bid 2012-2013-02-S in the Purchase of Miscellaneous Cafeteria Supplies from Summers Hardware for the Bid Period February 1, 2014 through July 31, 2014. And last, renew, excuse me, Approved Renewal of Bid 2013-2014-02-S N-RB, the Purchase of Bread and Grain Products from Sara Lee Bakery for the Bid Period February 1, 2014 through July 31, 2014. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none? Do I have to read it all again, Ms. Perkins? Thank you. So item on the floor is Approval of Items 7, 8, 9, and 10 for Renewal of Bids. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item, number 11, is Approved Budget Request to the City of Elizabethan, Letter Address to Jerome Kitchen City Manager. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander? Or anybody got any questions or comments?
Most are aware that we're not asking the city for additional operational funds. However, I have included this in the letter to Mr. Kitchens, that we believe, and the way it's stated here, it would be in the best interest of students, was better to have the high sales tax revenue committed to school capital outlet projects throughout the repayment schedule of all current school bonds. We would just like that for consideration to our city council, our fiscal body. If they will commit that, we're certain that there, there won't be a recurrence of our coming back and with the hat in hand, I think, but that's, that's what that letter indicates. May I also say one more thing, though? I think that we have proven that we are frugal, and we are responsible with the first 6.5 million, and, and we, we think we can be trusted for the $5 million at this point for the projects we're pursuing, so if this were to come about, it would not be with a tax increase, property tax increase, so under the circumstances, that would keep us going forever, I guess, I hope.
My understanding, I'm not sure, but I thought the monies after stop was to be used for emergency funds, not only for the school system, but as far as...
I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
As far as this, this is a 20-year period.
On the high sales tax?
Yes. And I thought this was going to be used as emergency funds, after the time limit, you know, that they had given us to have this.
The emergency fund for whom?
I thought it was going to be emergency fund in the city, and then, like, if we needed, if something occurred, or we had purchased something that was an emergency, that this is what, you know, after the time limit on the original.
Time.
Property.
Just don't, I'm not aware of that.
I don't know, I, that, you know, I'm not sure, but 20 years is a good...
My understanding, when this went before the city, on the referendum, that this was the expectation of the voters that I have spoken with, was that this monies would be for the school system needs, capital projects particularly, but I don't believe that there was a time limit set at the time of the referendum, I believe that was set by the city council subsequent to that, and they, they made the recommendation that it be set aside for X amount of time, whatever that was at the time, and they could adjust that, and Mr. Tester may want to speak to that, you're welcome to, I believe, but I do know that...
Well, you don't have to.
You don't have to, but if you want, if you remember the history of it better than we do. But as our, our duty is to the school system, and in that nature, I think this letter reflects a very positive thing for the persons and the system whom I am here to represent. It's asking for funds that are needed, it's asking for the ability to have that for a prolonged period of time, which I think is consistent with what the electorate went out and voted, and I know a lot of people did a lot of work, and I appreciate it. We've inherited the proceeds of their hard work as a board to be able to utilize these funds to the best interest of our students. I do think that there are times where it's appropriate to go to the city council with hat in hand, because that is our funding body, and they understand that role, I think. They seem to in our workshop, they're very financially responsible, and they sit down and look, look at it from all angles, and try to balance their representative, where they're representing the city and its needs. But I think it's certainly within our purview as a system to go to them and ask for doing this, and I appreciate that we're trying to show fiscal responsibility as well by giving them assurances that we're trying not to come to them with hat in hand any more often than is necessary. But the future of this city lies in the people that we are here to protect and serve. The children that are coming through our school systems are the future citizens of this city, and I think that it's probably the number one industry within our city, is the human beings that live here and have families, and I can't say that enough, that we are a bedroom community that is thriving because people want to live here, which is a beautiful thing for the people that we get to serve, and for the, the boards, both at the city council and here, we've got a great place to live, and so this letter is certainly, I think, asking for appropriate things.
I'd like to make a motion that we not send the letter at this time.
What?
There's a motion on the floor, we got to defeat this first, or amend the motion.
Yes. She didn't hear you out. Can you repeat what you said?
I said, there is a motion on the floor, and we need to defeat it or amend it.
Okay. I will amend it. Read the motion to me again.
The motion is to approve budget request to the City of Elizabethan, Letter Address to Mr. Jerome Kitchen City Manager, which is basically saying we are not asking for any kind of an increase than what we've gotten in the past.
I know.
And basically, the part about the high sales tax is just keeping it for the, for the school's capital project, which, as Dr. May said, was what everyone voted it for, and it's just a way to kind of, they don't have to do that, it's just something that we would be requesting. And as for somebody who stood out there and worked the polls that August, three months prior to reelection, I would like to, I'm a firm believer in this, so...
Okay, I'll make the motion then to, I'd like to add in there at a different time, I think timing is bad.
I'm not understanding why you want the letter to be, give, to be sent later. I'm, I'm not understanding that, I'm sorry.
Well, the second reading of the...
We could just say...
Five million, is that the next meeting, is it?
But this doesn't have anything to do with that, we're, this is talking about... Okay. It's basically, we're saying we're not asking for any increase in our operating allocation, so what we're doing with our budget thing is, we're not asking for any more money, we're just sending that, so...
You know, it'd be nice, well, I would just felt, you know, we are, as I said, having that second reading of five million, but, you know, we just spoke on, it's okay.
Okay. So what are you...
So let's add, just add that phrase on to that.
What phrase?
What I just said, not to send the letter at this time. We could add it on easily. Approved Budget Request to the City of Elizabethan.
Can I ask why you want to, can I just ask why we're waiting? Because we're not asking for any more money?
I know.
Then why, do you want to ask for more money?
No.
If she sees a second, then we can vote either for the, then we can go again.
Okay, so we have, and I'm sorry, my brain shuts down when we, we go off into opposite directions, so if I'm understanding correctly, we have a motion on the floor to add to this, to this, that we will send the letter at a second time, is that correct? That you want it sent at a later date, is that correct? Ms. Perkins, help me out.
Mrs. Armstrong has made a motion to amend.
She wants to amend?
Is what I thought she was saying. Is that correct, Mrs. Armstrong? You're making a motion to amend?
Yeah.
Okay, what you have stated thus far is approved budget request to the City of Elizabethan, but you didn't say anything else.
Well, you should keep it in there.
We have, excuse me, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this letter and send it to them. We can vote that down and then amend it if that, is that the proper procedure? We already have a motion and a second to approve.
Correct, you have a motion and a second on the floor.
How about, let's, yeah, I'm with Ms. Alexander, let's do that, and then it's, the motion fails, then we can make the amendment. And I apologize for everyone at home that's probably sitting there going, wow, so, I'm sorry, it's been a long, long day. So let's stick with the original one, we'll vote on that, if it doesn't pass, then we will, am I correct? Is this correct, Dr. May? Okay.
Actually, if you want to make an amendment, then you have to make a motion to amend, it has to be seconded.
Okay, so we need a second for...
If it's seconded, then you can vote on the motion with the amendment, or vote it down, or...
Okay, so I need a second on Ms. Armstrong's amendment.
I'll make a second.
Then there's discussion of that, and I don't see any harm in, so per to that discussion, I don't see any harm in, in sending it now or late, or waiting, but I, I don't know why we're actually discussing sending letters on this, why does the board have to approve this letter?
Mrs. Armstrong, would you please restate for me the wording that you want in your motion to amend, please, so that I have that recorded correctly?
The amendment, not to send the letter at this time.
So you want it to read?
Period.
Approved Budget Request to the City of Elizabethan, not to send at this time?
That'd be all, can you understand that?
I think you're going to have to, we're going to have to word it, are we, do we need to word it differently?
Well, I was trying to be helpful.
And I understand that, okay, now that we're discussing it, can you explain to me, because I'm not understanding why you don't want to...
No, I don't plan to discuss it.
Okay, so you don't want...
I'll call for the vote, then.
So, Ms. Baker, are you seconding what Mrs. Armstrong did? Okay, now you go with the discussion.
So now we are voting on whether or not we want to add the amendment of we're not sending at this time. Would you please call the roll?
This is on not to...
This is on the amendment.
It's on to not...
On the amendment.
We are voting on, you are voting on your motion to amend. Mrs. Armstrong, how are you voting?
She, Ms. Armstrong. That's what we're voting on, that's what, that's what we're voting on right now, is your amendment, so she's asking you for a voice vote.
Are you voting?
To amend it.
You're voting yes?
To amend it.
Ms. Armstrong, I need you to say yes, that you want to vote on this. I need a voice vote, if you don't mind. Can you just say yes?
Are you saying yea or nay?
This is on your amendment, I just need for you to say that you're voting yes. Yes.
Do you want to vote for it or not?
If you're wanting to vote for it, I just need you to say yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I needed, thank you.
I thought I said that in roundabout.
Ms. Baker, how are you voting?
Thank you.
Mr. Isaacs?
No.
Dr. May?
No.
Ms. Brewer?
No. So now we vote on the original. Item on the floor is to approve budget request to City of Elizabethan, a letter addressed to Mr. Jerome Kitchen City Manager. Do I need to get another motion to approve it? Okay, so we already have it.
You already have your motion and second on that, now you're taking your vote, either voice or roll call, whichever.
Would you mind doing a roll call vote?
Be glad to.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Armstrong? Ms. Baker?
Yes, but I want it to be outside the main vote, Mr. Armstrong, at five million. Thank you.
Mr. Isaacs? Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Brewer?
Next item is to approve the purchase of a mobile lab for the use of Sales Bridge Math Class at EHS from Dell Computers, utilizing funds from the Nice Longer Grant, in the amount of $30,723.54. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We are very fortunate to have with us this evening, Ms. Judy Fletcher, who's assistant to the principal of the high school, who has worked with all Nice Longer endeavors, and this is quite a project, and she's going to explain what it is, and why it is so valuable. Please, Ms. Fletcher.
Thank you very much. For anyone that is not aware, in 2010, the Nice Longer Foundation was awarded an I-3 Grant Invest in Innovation from the U.S. Department of Education, totaling $17 million, with matching funds from the Nice Longer Foundation, the Bill Gates and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Rural School Community Trust, and the J.P. Morgan Foundation. EHS... Gates Foundation, the Rural School Community Trust, and the J.P. Morgan Foundation. EHS was approved to be included in this amazing partnership, and we are in a consortium that unites the resources and leadership of 15 school systems, which equals 29 high schools in the Northeast Tennessee area, in an effort to ensure that students in our region graduate from high school and are prepared for college and ready and career-ready. I would like to begin by extending the high school's sincere appreciation to Scott Niswonger, the Niswonger Foundation, and the entire team of the Northeast Tennessee College and Career Ready Course. Over the next, over the past several years, we have received $400,000 from this group, for the high school in technology. Recently, one of our science teachers, Mr. Wood, wrote and was awarded a grant for over $35,000 that he's in the process of ordering to start our first AP Biology lab at EHS, which includes training textbooks, lab equipment, and materials. I also wrote a grant for a 30-unit mobile lab totaling $30,700 that you're looking at, and this mobile lab will give students at EHS the ability to participate in the Sales Bridge Math program that is partnered with the State Department and Northeast Community College, in which students are able to receive dual credit for college for this Bridge Math program. So I would appreciate if we would approve this tonight. Thank you.
I didn't realize that we had been such fortunate recipients of such a large amount. That's fantastic. Yes, we are. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. It's amazing, and I think it's fantastic that these monies are available. I'm just looking at the unit price per computer, and they're $1,200 computers. That's, that's a pretty nice computer, I guess, is what I'm...
So there's, you may have to meet certain requirements and specs of these computers to...
The Bridge Math program is completely on the computer, so it took specific software.
And the wonderful thing about dealing with the Niswonger Foundation is that, as when Ms. Irwin was there, they don't have to do the three bids quotes and things of this nature. They just pay for it. And that's, 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 being constrained as we have been for many years, it's wonderful when they just say, we'll take care of that. And so in the circumstances, they're just, in essence, Mrs. Fletcher and others have done this work, and they're, and Niswonger's paying for it. So please say yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
I don't want to delay the meeting, but I want to thank you for your work on the grant. Grant writing is a very difficult skill, and we're blessed to have people, and I'm sure you had others that helped you, that I don't want to leave anybody out. But I also know, at least in the medical and business worlds, writing grants is, is an art, and your efforts are rewarded because of your abilities, and we're thankful that you have taken the time to do that and have done a good job so that we could get that.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Item on the floor is to approve the purchase of a mobile lab for the use of Sales Bridge Math Class at EHS from Dell Computers utilizing funding from the NISWonger grant in the amount of $30,723.54. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Happily passed. Next item is to approve proposed Elizabethan City Schools' calendar for the 2014-2015 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Hes is the leader of that calendar committee, as well as the other administrators have, have contributed greatly to that. We also had two representatives from each school involved in this, so it wasn't as if this was something railroaded by the administration. But if you have questions specifically for Mr. Van Hes, please direct them to him. And there is a chance we're doing this prior to our professional development, being approved by the state, but we don't see a problem with that because we are always very meticulous with doing that. So we can always come back to you if the state has a problem with our calendar and, and ask you to make that adjustment, so we can re-recommend it to them. So we, Mr. Van Hes, I thank you. All you have to do is nod on this. You feel pretty good about this calendar, do you not? That's, thank you. That's the answer I wanted.
Did you, did he say they included the parents? Did they question any parents about scheduling?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
I know, I get a lot of complaints over this one issue. And it's, they planned vacations in the August, the month of August, and they have a problem, I guess I should be speaking to you, they have a problem with the early beginning of school. Now, I don't, I'm not having, I don't have any issue with this because I don't have a lot in the school system. But I do get a lot of complaints about schools should wait after Labor Day. I hear that so many times. But now, I just wondered if you had asked, if anybody had questioned, anybody had questioned?
No.
It doesn't matter to me, one way or the other.
Right. I would always encourage you and any board member, if you have people that bring concerns to you, please let us know. I've never, never had anyone, we have a general feel at times from parents that, that we would like to start later as well. But if we start later, the testing window's set, so what we're going to do is we're going to cheat our children because we can't get enough material taught before the testing. We can't decide the testing window. The state decides that. So this is really an issue, if people are upset, they need to talk to the State Department about that. But again, if anyone ever has a question, any, any situation at all that you're not comfortable with, or whatever, please encourage them to call us. Please.
I'm going to send them to you.
Please do.
I only had one question about snow days. How many days are padded in the schedule?
There are, I think, seven, yeah, seven professional development days. So we have 13, so six of those are snow days. And that's okay.
That's at the bottom. I didn't see it. Thank you. I was just curious, in light of our recent snow Mageddon that we had.
And we have zero left at this point.
I will say, I talked to people from other school systems and parents, and they always are very impressed with our calendar. And I know no one wants to start early, but we understand why. But you guys do a great job, and I think teachers are great at planning this because they know when kids are going to need breaks. And I appreciate that there are days built into, just about every month, that kids get a little time away, teachers get a little time to get a little work done. And I think that these calendars are very thoughtfully put together. I appreciate all the hard work. I would not want to serve on that committee. So we appreciate those of you who do, because I know that's a lot of work. Have any more questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve proposed Elizabethan City Schools' calendar for the 2014-2015 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next item is approved contract with Verizon Wireless for, let me find my thing, $2,174 per month. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We had accused Mr. Trent of lowballing this situation right here, but that was just an error that was made. If you have specific questions about this, and you probably will, please direct them to Mr. Trent.
Question that says the terms of this quote are, how long is the contract for? One year, one-year or two-year contract? How long is the contract?
Technically, with contracts, this is a State Department contract, there is no exact term on it. We're pretty much, once we go into it, we're month-to-month. It's listed as one year. If we would decide to execute it one month, there's never a penalty with any cell phone carrier for us to terminate early, or we can stay on this contract as long as we wish.
So if people have a better deal, you can just give them notice and sign with someone else?
Absolutely.
And not tied to it for a year, two years?
Exactly.
Is this a state rate?
Yes, it is. And it's, it's really a great deal. Based on our usage right now, I'm going to estimate our bill over the course of a year will probably be about $5,000 less. And of course, the biggest reason, I think most administrators will tell you, our coverage right now with Sprint is very poor in our schools and Verizon. That's the carrier we've been wanting to get for some time. We just could not afford it. With this contract, we now can.
So you have Sprint, and you're going to change the...
Correct. Yes, this is the phones for all the administrators in the schools we use.
How long is this pricing good for? You say it's open-ended, is it, can they come up in six months and say, we want an increase, or...
Well, I can't say no, but the guy told me no. The representative I talked to, he told me that this is our price until we decide to go a different route. That's what I was told.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Anybody have any other questions, comments? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve contract with Verizon Wireless for $2,174 a month. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next is to approve purchase of 96 tablets and keyboards, including a two-year warranty and system maintenance from MXN Corporation for a total cost of $23,688, utilizing Race to the Top funding. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
We will utilize our Race to the Top Guru, Dr. Gardenair, if you'll come forward. He also has an example to show you here, so I just have, sir.
The request is, we're in year four of the Race to the Top funding. We were very conservative throughout the four years, and we're able to save a little money. We had some employees that retired early that we weren't anticipating, and so we were kind of left with about a half a year to work with a little bit of excess money. We're getting ready for the park assessment coming up next year. And to give you an idea about what the tablets are like, we've already purchased, the boards approved, about 450 so far, that we're going to use throughout the schools. But this wired keyboard is one of the options that we have to have in order to be park-ready. It has to be wired, and this, the company specifically built these to be able to be used with the park assessment. So we feel comfortable they'll be a good purchase for us, knowing that next year, coming up with $25,000 is going to be pretty tough. So we're trying to make the best out of a good situation where we had a little bit of savings over the last four years in the grant. So we're excited about this. It's going to be an Android platform. These will not just be used for testing, they'll be in the hands of students being used every day. And so we'd love to have a device in every student's hand if we could. It'll just take us some time to get there. But when we have a little money here or there that we could save and do that, that's what we kind of plan to do technology-wise, build onto the platform and the wireless network and infrastructure that we have. So I ask you to consider that this evening, to use the remaining part of that. And it does come with a two-year warranty, which will be nice. As you know, you put it in the hands of children sometimes, big things can happen. So we'll appreciate that and all the support that will also be given to the program.
Ladies and gentlemen, I can assure you that Frugal is the middle name of Dr. Gardenair, and he has researched this to the max, and he wouldn't recommend it, and Mr. Trent wouldn't purchase it unless it was the right thing to do.
Any other questions, comments? Item on the floor, oh, sorry, anybody? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve purchase of 96 tablets and keyboards, including a two-year warranty and system maintenance from MXN Corp. for a total cost of $23,688, utilizing Race to the Top funding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next item, approved contract with East Tennessee Fire Alarm Incorporated for fire alarm annual inspections and central station monitoring from March 17, 2014 through March 16, 2015, a total cost of $11,700. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back to the trustworthy individual, Bill Muse, and I know that Junior High probably has had the most problems with the fire alarm and things of this nature. But if we could cast our minds back about seven years, where we had to pay $172,000 to replace the fire alarm system at Junior High, that Mr. Muse has been with us, monitored that, has come in all hours, day and night, and he's a person whom we've come to trust and believe, and I can assure you, he will not burn itself with anything, but he will be responsive. And they depend on Mr. Carter, don't you, would you say that he's as dependable an individual with a service that we have ever seen? So I'm not just making that up. That's, that's the truth. They have the fire, fire alarm goes off many times, two and three times over the weekend, in all hours. And Mr. Little, Mr. Carter, Mr. Womper, it's worn them out. But anyway, he is always a person who answers the phone. We would appreciate your consideration.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve contract with East Tennessee Fire Alarm Incorporated for fire alarm annual inspections and central station monitoring from March 17, 2014 through March 16, 2015, at a total cost of $11,700. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next item is approved creation of a part-time assistant to the teacher position to assist with students in special education classes. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Dr. Gardenair, if you'll come forward again. You respond to this, that is, that came out of an M team dealing with special ed, and it's, it's a fixing endeavor, I think.
We just needed to add that. There was a need for a student, so we need to add that to our budget to make sure we took care of the students' needs. That's pretty much all the information I can give legally on that, so.
I gave too much, I think.
Probably. That's okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Dr. G?
Mitch Brown.
Item on the floor is to, oh, I'm sorry. Item on the floor is to approve creation of a part-time assistant to the teacher position to assist with students in the special education classes. Can I get a motion, I mean, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next item, approved insurance premium restructure to be effective January 1, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dr. G?
It's kind of interesting that I'm the person talking about this one, but what we're trying to do, as well as almost, we won't say every public entity out there, but we're looking to put together a healthier wellness initiative within the school system. And what we're doing is, there's a, the Partners for Health program that the state has right now is not, it is a health screening and wellness program that goes at coaches, employees, on how to have better health and so forth. And what we have proposed is that every employee has the opportunity to be a part of the program. They save approximately $25 in the process if they do belong to the program. What we've suggested is that we give the employees an incentive to continue being on the Partners for Health program. We think it's good for our employees if they are, their wellness is better. We feel that they'll perform better, and they're better for our children. And so we want to encourage them to be a part of that. Now, in the last several years, about every other year, they have a health screening that's basically blood pressure, weight, those types of things. And then based on that, the Partners for Health program will come in and say, there's a possibility you may have an area where you need to look at. And it gets people in with their doctor, or they can come here and we provide free screenings here. They wouldn't have to use a co-pay or anything like that. So we have several spots, and for instance, this year is a screening year where you have to have the biometric assessment. And so we're setting that up at TA Digger for the employees. So every employee will have an opportunity, if they would like to, to participate. The flip side of that is, they would end up, if they didn't participate or chose not to participate, it's about $25 for them, that they would have to pay monthly on their premium. So we feel that that's a nominal amount. Their health is more important, and that we need to be in the business of looking after our people. And getting to the doctor once every other year is not too much to ask, we do not think at this point. So we're trying to keep them healthy, and we think it's a good program if you'll consider it.
Haven't, as a result of some of these screenings, haven't some teachers and employees been aware of some issues they didn't know they had and been married?
Through the health coaching program, employees have the opportunity to talk with a trained health coach, and they look at the areas where they may need to do that. And it's, we have a weight challenge, or the fitness challenges, water challenges that are going on in the school system right now through coordinated school health throughout the year. And this is kind of an extension of that. So it's, it's something that we think, we measure the amount of poundage that we've lost throughout the year and talk about that. So it's just another, kind of the next step in that initiative for us.
Poundage is a terrible word.
Don't hear me, it's terrible.
Don't hear me, it's terrible.
And, yes ma'am, diabetes, high blood pressure and things of this nature have been detected in some people and probably saved heart attacks and strokes. And so, in essence, this is not a punish for those people who are non-participants in the program. It's really a reward to the system to try to encourage those people to be part of the partnership, so.
The majority of the employees already participate in this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Three hundred, 324.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do you have any statistics on impact on missed time from work or things of that nature?
Well, we're hoping with what we put in the budget for attendance tracking and employee tracking, we're going to, we're going to, for the first time, have some of that data that we can use at our fingertips. And maybe we'll be able to report next year, how many people have come on to Partners for Health and what effect that's had on attendance. So, we're hoping, we're hoping that you'll approve that also coming up with our budget requests. Thank you.
Item on the floor is to approve insurance premium restructure to be effective January 1, 2015. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Next item, approve on first reading board policy 1.301, executive committee as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So many.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Let's see.
Ms. Armstrong, I believe this is yours.
Yes. After, actually, what's, the reason I was doing this is after the letter, and I'm not going to get into discussion on that, that the board received from Ms. Owens. And I got to thinking about that, and I thought, well, now, if the executive, I called Nashville, and I, actually, three different times, and the attorney said, they should advise the board if, in a situation, you've got communication that should get to the board, at least give them, you know, an idea of what you may be presenting to the board. So, I read it carefully, and number seven is the one that I added just a little bit on with the Tennessee School Board with his help. I read it, I did not understand it, what did it cover? And so, I said, well, people, I said, read this and tell me what this is saying to me. And they had a problem with that also. And you notice at the end of that, I think that it's a semicolon, and then, "and." And I thought, well, has there been something removed from the policy at some time that needed to go back? The attorney kept saying, "Use the word advise." So, I said, what does this sound like? Advise the board of possible board action. Anything that will take action, at least advise the board that it has been discussed. Now, he reminded me that the executive committee is the only committee that's set up by statute. I think I remember that some time ago. And they do represent the board, it's an extension of the board, but it's a separate entity. So, he said, that would be good, advise the board before action is taken. But maybe you read it differently. I don't know. I know it says that you're to submit to the board any business regular meeting of the board before reporting all business transacted since the last regular meeting. And I think you do that, I went back to check, and you kind of do. And so, I thought, well, would this help? If we don't need to take approval on it, because that's not what it's set up for. So, we don't have to approve it, it's just advise the board. Thank you, Mr. Wright, I am cold up here. Thank you, thank you. Mercy, my hands are so cold. But anyway, I thought, well, maybe that will clarify. I really wanted it to help, and if there is possible action, then at least give us some information on it, or, but maybe this, this is fine with you. I did, I talked with him three different times, and every time, he kept saying, "Use the word advise." Advise the board. And it's not up for approval, it's just advise, it's all good. Avoid any possible board action. So, if it doesn't help you, then there's no point in adding it. But it would have helped me to have known what was happening. And maybe I wouldn't have been quite so upset, and I was upset, as you well know, over the letter.
The question I have, has our board attorney seen this and gave an opinion on this? So, that, I know you kept referring to the attorney, I was at the TSBA.
I knew the TSBA attorney.
And they're fine, wonderful people, but I would like to have maybe our own, where we have a policy up for adoption or something, I would kind of like to get an opinion from our attorneys to kind of see what their opinion is.
Is that?
I mean, that's my personal thing, I don't know about how everybody else would feel, but.
Well, does that pretty well, number seven, does that pretty well cover it, you think?
Which thing? You're talking about originally or what you've added?
What?
Are you asking, the question is, as it is written or what you've changed?
As it's written, but not with the addition. If it, if it's, it's good, and you feel like it does its job, then it'll be it.
The thing that was kind of concerning me was approve on first reading, especially something like Mr. Isaac said that we haven't had the attorneys look at. Because I'm always cautious about how we, with tinkering with policy, just simply because I want to make sure that it's, we've looked at everything from all angles and made sure that it's following everything. I mean, we've had the executive committee, as long as I've been on the board, we haven't made any changes to it. I know that in the time I've been, you know, on the committee, this, we've not really, other than set the agenda, we've not done anything else, so.
Well, I liked what he said about, it's not up for approval. Because that would defeat the reason for an executive committee, and it would. But it just didn't come across, I've thought about the business, and that's the, the ends, what we take care of regularly at every board member.
What would you do about time-sensitive things? Because I can't call you guys and poll you, because that violates the sunshine laws. So, that was kind of something that, that kind of, in using advise, when it's a time-sensitive matter, that's where I think maybe we need to look at this to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation that, you know.
Well, it didn't matter that much to me, whether it was changed, or added to, or taken away. But I, I had a little problem when I read it, and I thought that made it more clear for me. But if it doesn't for you, then good.
Mrs. Armstrong, one thing that, at your request, we started several years ago, is that each board member receives a copy of all the financial information, not just the summary sheets, but all of it. So, you do have an itemized listing of all financial transactions that have occurred within the school system from one month to the next. And that's something that you have had in hand for several years now.
On this addendum, I don't want to belabor the point, but the concern I had with the addition was, number one, it's under the number seven. If it should be in there, then it should be number eight, and then number eight should be moved down to number nine. The reason I say that is because it would suggest that the beginning of the sentence, to submit for approval, and then it would say, the advice of board possible action. I think it would read as part of that responsibility, and it would be a separate responsibility. The second problem was, when I went to the board policy workshop, they said, be very careful with broad statements. Advise is, is okay, you know, that's just basically let us know. And I know, I expect that too, if it's a major change, and advise telephone call, something, let us know that something's going out that might be, but it's time-sensitive, and it doesn't require action, you know, that sort of thing. But the problem was possible, you know, that's the big broad term. And it's very hard to get that too strict, but it would make it very easy to fall in violation of a policy. And I'm thinking more about repercussions down the road, where you use such broad terms of possible board actions. It's kind of vague to me as to whether that's legal action, or if it's just a letter. And when we talked about the letter earlier, I'm not sure why we put it on the agenda anyway, to the one that we had on this agenda earlier today, it's just a letter from the school system. It wasn't anything that required a board action, as far as I'm concerned. But I think that it's typically, if we are not time-sensitive, we do try to include us in the communications that are coming from us to, you know, other bodies. But this would tie your hands, is my point, to say that possible is a big term. That would, I'm afraid, hamstring you to not, to think through everything. Possible is a big word. Anything is possible.
Also, there's no definition of the term business. In one case, we're talking about financial matters, and if you're talking about all business transacted by the school system during that period, then you're, you're talking about a lot of actions on a lot of people's parts that don't include that which is financial in nature. So, I don't know if that's possible. Don't use that, overuse that word.
Can we get a legal opinion from our attorney before we move forward with this? I mean, I'm open to, you know, whatever's necessary, but wording is very important in these policies, because it's our responsibility to enforce these policies. And, you know, wording can make all the difference in, you know, enforcing these policies. And I think I'd like to have some direction from those folks if.
So, can we make a motion then to postpone this to the next meeting? And if that is seconded and approved, then in the interim, make the motion that you take it to the legal advice.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
That is a motion, I would second it.
That is a motion.
I'd feel a little more comfortable with that.
So, the item on the floor with a motion and a second is that we will postpone this until the next meeting to get some feedback on, from the attorney on the wording. You want to keep it as approve on first reading, or typically do it like we do with most things, and just?
I'm okay.
The table that you're going to have to have first reading, I think.
Yes.
I don't know that for sure.
So, we're going to, item on the floor, we have a motion to postpone it in a second.
I'll restate the motion. So, the motion is to postpone it until the next meeting, so that we may get a legal opinion as to the proper way to incorporate the wording, and the necessity of incorporating the wording, and to bring it back up for a standard approval process of the, the motion that was originally stated.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you. That item has been postponed. Make myself a note. Next item is approve first reading of board policy 3.201, naming new school facilities. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
And can I get a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong?
This, I had trouble finding it because, because it is an old policy. And so, I went back to my old policy book, I think I got it in 1985, 87, 89, I think. And there it's listed, I thought I had given you all, I did. I gave you a copy of the contents, and there it is, naming schools and facilities, and that's in section 3, 3.210. And so, I knew it was a lot like Carter County, but I think Carter County, I gave you a copy of that one, so you'd know what was in there. And it is very, in my opinion, wordy. It's such a word, it's wordy, but I think it's just too much to it. But if this, they're happy with, that's fine with me. I also gave you a copy of, yeah, there's Carter County. And I thought I gave you Kingsport.
You gave us Johnson City.
Did I give you Kingsport?
No, Johnson City.
Johnson City, okay. And I thought that was an interesting one, is Johnson City. Kingsport, and I didn't realize that all of their elementary schools are named after presidents. I didn't realize that till I saw that. The committee is chosen by the board, membership, and established by the board. I thought that was a good part of it. I can copy the Kingsport, and you said I didn't have it in there.
Not Kingsport, no.
I should have copied it for you. And so, it, to me, was, made the most sense, but I gave you the table of contents, and I didn't give you the policy. Okay. Yeah, Johnson City. Okay. So, I thought, well, maybe we need to take a look at that again. And I didn't ask for any changes that weren't already there in the policy. Schools shall be named for living persons, except for those who have rendered exemplary service. And two schools in the system shall not be given the same name, that makes it good. Presidents, governors, recognized national, state, and local leaders. And the single building, I thought that was good, the policy. I was trying to think, I know they had it in 1985, but I don't know, I'm going to have to do some more research. If you can name a part of a building, you know, for someone, they did our daughter, they named her. After she died, they named a hall in her honor at Happy Valley. Geographic, I thought that was good. But I thought, well, it's time to take a look at that policy. It's an old policy, and I've had it out several months now, but I just haven't put it into the board packet.
The, I pulled up our online policy manual, it's been rescinded years ago. We don't currently have a policy on this. So, I would recommend that we move this to policy workshop. There's clearly implications that we need to really think through, because we have, obviously, capital projects coming up. This may be an issue that we want to consider with some time and do consideration of what it implies. The one that you put on here is the TSBA, it appears, the 3.210. But I don't see a 3.210 in our current online policy manual. I believe it was rescinded. I think it was rescinded in, at some point, and has not been incorporated any longer.
It was in the older, but not in the latest.
Right, I'm sure at some point, since 85, that's been many years, I'm sure a board somewhere rescinded it. At any rate, we don't have a policy on it, and we may need to have one on that. There's other things, today we were talking about the cell phones, and I did a quick search here on my online policy manual, and I couldn't find one on cellphone use. And that may be one that we want to look at, there may be one, and I didn't find it. But I did cursory research on this. But there's a few things for the policy workshop, when we have it, that are going to be, potentially need a lot of thought. I think any policy needs a lot of thought, because policies have the rule of law. And for instance, you know, when we have policies about management issues, you have to follow those policies, whether they make sense or not. We were made aware in our, in our TSBA meeting, that one of our local school systems has a policy that they have to, they've rescinded indefinitely about graduation and students' attendance, because they didn't recognize the repercussions of it. And they ended up having a hard time graduating some pretty high-performing students, because they're, they didn't have the foresight to see what a zero tolerance on attendance issues had on effect when someone had an injury or was out. And so, at any rate, having learned from those examples, I think something like this, we ought to put in a workshop where we can sit around and talk openly about, what do we want in it, what don't we? But in general, I appreciate that you did the research, because we hadn't really started thinking about it. And we've got things coming up, and then naming facilities by the TSBA looks pretty good. TSBA is a very good resource, and it makes a lot of sense. We may want to incorporate some other things that are specific to our community, things that are, you know... that are, you know, valuable to us. For instance, they mentioned that they had to have something to do with education. We might want to broaden it. It may be someone that has something to do with, you know, the city founders, or city as a hall, you know. Land and Carter, for instance, may not have had anything to do with anything, but we might want to name something after the government.
I think it was updated, I don't know why I'm thinking, two thousand and five, but I'm going to do a little more research in my older book and see. It just disappeared. It wasn't deleted, so this policy stands until it's either deleted or.
Well, it's deleted. It's not in our policy manual. This is the official policy manual of our school system, is the online one. We adopted that a long time ago.
Yeah. If I could have found the deletion, that would have helped.
Mm-hmm.
Could have found it.
So I don't know if you want to withdraw that, or if we want to, need to vote it up or down, or if I need to amend it. Mrs. Perkins, what's the recommendation on this, to move it to a workshop?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea for a policy workshop. I think that's a good suggestion.
Are you amending your motion then, Ms. Armstrong?
I don't know what she said.
Are you amending your motion to make it a policy workshop?
Yes, I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, I'll second that.
So the item on the floor is to amend the item number twenty, that we will make a policy workshop. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Next, item approve on first reading, board policy five point eight oh two, qualifications and duties of the director of schools. Can I get a motion to approve?
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second? Thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Okay, now, this in no way will affect the present superintendent. It would be for future superintendents. I like, I think because we do have such high standards in our school system, that maybe, I can see both sides, where you have the master's degree, or you have the doctorate degree. But I like the doctorate degree, actually, for superintendent. I have for several years, and so that's why I thought, well, I want to take that out and just say, I don't anticipate you all voting for that. However, I had to give it a try, because I thought, we need the doctorate degree to lead our system. I noticed that Haslam, Governor Haslam, had several, I thought, great suggestions, and it kind of related to this. And one is, you know, freshman and sophomore, no tuition. It's great, you'll love that one.
It's not affecting us, it's affecting the community colleges.
State school.
Yeah, so no, we're not loving it.
That's right, sorry.
That's okay.
But anyway, I thought, well, I'm going to go for that doctorate degree. I asked them at TSBA, I said, what number has the doctorate? And I know at one time, you could have any profession, as long as you had a BS degree, you could be elected superintendent. And I meant to go back and check my, I don't believe it's still in the law. Is it taken out? But anyway, I know they suggested a banker. I thought, you know, a banker might make a very good superintendent. But that's been some time ago.
You have to have a teaching license now.
Right, right. But anyway, that's the way I thought, I thought. I think the classroom, three years is a biggie, in my opinion. And I was telling my sister, who's retired teacher, and she said, oh, I think they need to have five years at least in the classroom. So I think, well, we could leave that at three. I didn't change anything else. I asked my husband, I said, what do you think about that? And he said, I don't like it. He said, when they have a doctorate, sorry, Corey, they, since they know everything. But that's just my husband.
Knock one down.
I'm sorry, Josh. But it, it is, it is, they're just requiring more and more education all the time, and there's been a lot said about that, this election.
The one hesitation I have is just tying the hands of the next board that will be doing the superintendent search. Hope that's way, way, way down the road, but whenever that occurs, I think that if they want to make that distinction, they can. I just hesitate to whoever is next on the board, kind of tying their hands, because there may be somebody who's absolutely fantastic, who just doesn't have it. That's my only thing, just, you know, looking down the road at whoever's on, who's sitting up here in the, in the future. Item on the floor is to approve on first reading, board policy five point eight oh two, qualifications and duties of the director of schools. Ms. Perkins, can I have a second?
Mrs. Armstrong?
Ah, yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes, and I believe most of our local systems require that, to have a doctor.
Mr. Isaacs? Dr. May?
No.
See, I told you.
Ms. Brewer?
No.
I predicted that one correctly.
Next item is approve first reading of board policy six point four oh five, medicines as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
We're very fortunate to have a medical doctor here on, on our board. To begin with, this is a focus more on.
A doctor.
But he doesn't, he doesn't think he knows everything, I don't think. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, this is a focus more on insulin usage and things of this nature, but we will be seeing more information in the next month on EpiPen usage and things of this nature. So I think the biggest focus is in reference to sharp Shelby, that's the last line, forty-one, forty-two, sharp Shelby stored in a secure, accessible location, and that's the same for EpiPens coming up. But under circumstances, this is a reasonable board policy, and I suggest and ask you to pass it.
I do want to speak to it. You know, I've thought for a long time we've been behind this curve on this. EpiPens, for instance, you brought that up, is a life-saving device for those who, for instance, have a bee sting allergy or something, and we don't want any of our children's peanut allergies. We go way out of our ways to keep children with peanut allergies safe in our cafeterias and otherwise, but we still can't protect them from people who bring them in, and there have been numerous cases of anaphylaxis and death of children. You know, it's not common, but it's, one is all it takes. And we have zero tolerance policies that are enacted by law that says, a child cannot bring drugs to school of any nature. We have the same thing on weapons, or, you know, knives, or anything else. There are certain things that are legislated, and we don't have any latitude. So, given that the state recognized that there were certain individuals, for instance, diabetic children, that were being hampered by these policies, by these laws, they made exceptions for certain things of this nature. And I've often thought that the law was behind on this, and it frustrated me. It was one of the first things I noticed when I was reading policies about medicines and the drug policies. It's clearly designed to limit recreational drug use, and drugs that we would all view as, with negative connotations. But the fact of the matter is, it was hurting people who maybe had need for medications that were more like astmas, and asthma and things of that nature. And we have ways around that, and we've approved the manual before from our health nurses here, and they've done a great job, by the way, writing that. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but I had it looked at by us and by some pediatricians here locally in Lisbethan, and it was, Teresa Robinson did a great job on making sure that those were up to date. But, you know, we need to be able to give our kids insulin, we need to give them EpiPens, we need to get them taken care of, and so I would hope that my fellow board members would support this.
May I say that we finally have a nurse at all schools, and we have a supervisor who is an RN here, Mrs. Robson. And the thing about this is, as a principal, I was concerned about inhalers, injecting insulin, EpiPen usage, things of this nature, but the laws have changed about carrying that. So most of it, though, is self-administration. But, but yes, please do consider this possible.
Anybody else?
Do we have more children now that require medication in our schools, or they just?
Probably. We have more doctors, and the more doctors write more drugs, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
But it seems like it.
It does.
It certainly does. I think we're, you know, medicine's evolved to a point where we're, you know, asthma kids have so many more options than they had. And, you know, I remember growing up with children who didn't have beans, and they would wheats. And, you know, we had diabetic children who weren't aware. We now have more and more childhood obesity, which corresponds to more childhood, you know, diseases like hypertension, and, I mean, there's kids twelve years old with hypertension on medicines. Some of your kids here tonight that were here, I know at least one of them who's on an antihypertensive medicine. And, you know, there are people of that nature. So, yes, I think we do have more on it, but maybe we've had, I like to believe in medicine, we've had a better access to care and better care for our population in the youth ages where we didn't years ago. At least I like to believe, I don't know if that's true.
An aspirin would cure anything. You send a child to the office for an aspirin.
And used to, you could give it to them.
Yeah, we did.
I do want to say, I might have left other people out, Teresa was one, but there are, there are nurses in each school, and they're doing a great job. I just know she had worked with me on that, so don't feel left out. If you were one of those nurses, we have a great team here. I'm very comfortable with the medical care that's being delivered.
Ms. May?
I'm on the floor, is to approve first reading of board policy six point four oh five, medicines as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Next, approve first reading of board policy six point four one three, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
We need to be on our toes, because, of course, the law changes January one of this year. And as a result of this, of course, there are many directives here that are pre-performance in nature, but the most important thing, I think, most people will note, is that our coaches, athletic director, and most people who are in charge of individuals who are in physical activities and athletics are charged with being schooled on what concussion is all about. And we have parents here whose children have suffered serious concussions repeatedly and things of this nature, and had this law been in effect, they have to be checked, of course, by an MD, an osteopathic physician, or clinical neurologist, that's close to that. Anyway, but it has to be, it has to be assessed and in writing to get that person back into competition. That's been long overdue. But anyway, it's sort of vague as to how you pronounce that, how a person determines that the symptoms are of concussion. But I strongly ask that you consider this, because, again, we want to, we are behind the pitch on this one, too.
Any other questions, comments? Item on the floor is approve first reading of board policy six point four one three, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Last item, Ms. Armstrong requested minutes from the regular meeting for, wanted to make, to discuss that.
It's the third, it comes in, well, actually, it came under other the last time. That was a request, and I would like to have that documented by putting it in the record. Ms. Armstrong noted, noted her disagreement with the content of a letter she'd received, which was prepared by ECS Attorney Deborah Owens, addressed to Lisbethan City Council Attorney, at the request of the Board Executive Committee. And actually, that was not up for discussion. I did disagree with the letter, but I, that was a request that I was making, and I thought, that's where they met, they thought I was wanting a discussion, which I was not. And so I would like to have it documented, that my request was that no further letters be sent to me, letters be sent, no more letters. So if you'll just document that that was a request.
Footnote. Ms. Perkins, clarification, can we footnote that that was clarification, that? It's, is that what she wants to, just footnote, put a footnote to that, and then at the bottom of the approved minutes, that you restated this today? Is that the appropriate way to handle it? I'm not sure. I usually try to research it better, but I don't.
Do you want that to read specifically, that you do not want to receive any further communications from Ms. Owen, or you just want it open-ended, or how do you want me to note that?
You want that designated?
That's what I'm asking you. You tell me how, who you do not want to receive communications from, written or other.
I don't want any more that goes to the attorney for the city council. I know that.
I think, can I clarify what I think, what I think she wanted, maybe I'm wrong, is, are you saying that you wanted to amend the minutes, to reflect that that was a request?
Yeah.
So she's not saying she's requesting it right now. That may be her request, but her, she wanted to clarify the intent of that statement. And so I think a footnote down to the bottom, and if you'll add a line that, at the approval process, she restated that she was only requesting that a letter, that any letters to city council not be sent.
Without.
Without her approval.
Correct.
Okay. That was what she was saying, stating at the meeting, and she felt like it wasn't characterized in the minutes last time? Is that what I understand you to say? Do you hear me? Okay. I want to make sure.
I just want to be sure that this documented a request. Thank you.
All right. So, so we vote, move to approve the minutes with that footnote?
Okay, so that's, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wait, do we have a, who made the motion in second?
We didn't, because it was just, I thought she was just going to discuss it, so, oh, so we have to make the motion to adjourn?
No, no.
What I'm saying is that when you pulled it off from the consent agenda, to put it on here, it requires a separate vote.
Thank you.
That's what I thought we did, though, but maybe not.
No, I don't think I did.
If you did, I don't know who, who made the motion in second.
So how would I word this, that we made a motion to?
We gotta go back. I make a motion that we address the corrected minutes.
Thank you for doing that. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
About that.
Yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, a sec. Anybody opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Very quickly, next regular scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, March twentieth, twenty fourteen, at six thirty in this boardroom. We will have our second budget workshop at five thirty prior to the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
March, March fourteenth?